Ninth, twenty twenty. This meeting is being recorded. Is anyone else recording? No one else is recording? Okay, so we'll, um, we'll do attendance. We've got Jackie.
Yes.
Jonathan.
Here.
Pedro.
Here.
Brandy's here. Okay, our other two board members are out this evening. We'll jump right into four minutes. I don't believe we have any four minutes. Okay, we'll move on to the minutes of December twelfth. Do we have a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. You're, you guys are gonna be very busy. Um, so we have a motion in a second. All in favor, aye, then opposed, okay. Carrie's. First item on our agenda is the cluster residential development zoning item. We received that in draft form. I think that's a revised draft, right?
Right, uh, you should have in front of you the December thirty first version of the cluster residential development. And that was pursuant to comments made at your December twelve meeting. There were some comments at that meeting regarding, um, the, um, earlier draft had a maximum separation between units. Um, and it had some requirements for open space and there were comments that, um, uh, both of those things probably should be revised or deleted. So I've made some edits in the draft, um, primarily in section opposed section eight point five point four, which hopefully I'll get my screen there soon.
Can I ask a question?
In section eight, five, six, which would be open space section. So it's still a draft for discussion and see where you wanna go.
Sure. Uh, I mean, I think it looks really good. I, I have two, three-ish questions. Um, one under eight, five, three. Um, when we say the types of structures permitted, single, two, three, and multi, do we, is multi what we want to be included in there in terms of a
If someone wants to.
Residential cluster? Like, are we thinking up to an eight-unit building in that case? I just wanna like talk it through with you guys and just see if that's our intent.
Well, this is, this is potentially the new way of developing land in Great Barrington that we wanna encourage. And it's all residential. And a lot of the, a lot of the, um, projects that were shown as demonstration of cluster development or cottage development, whatever you wanna call it. Uh, they had a lot of single family, but they would also have an occasional multi, multifamily. As part of it. So I don't think there's any reason to rule it out.
One of the controlling factors with this particular draft is that, um, it's really about the size of the lot and how the dimensional regulations control how big the building or buildings are and how much the lot is covered by the buildings. So it's not really about the number of units
Right.
on the site. So whether it's one ten thousand square foot McMansion with two people in it or several structures or several attached structures or several detached structures totaling ten thousand square feet with people in each unit. Um, this is not regulated the number of people or units on the site. It's really just about the size of the structure and does it um, fit on the site according to the national regulations, the parking and the open space requirements.
And, and to, to that point, I wondered under eight, five, four, one, are we clear enough in the parcel size, site coverage in number six? And the statement that the RCD may be developed with structures on one or, or on one lot or on contiguous lots?
That's a funny thing to say.
What?
That's like three things you're asking.
But they're related in my mind, right?
Well, I mean, first we gotta ask question, why do you need double lot size to, to do this?
It, it's all part and parcel. Yeah, I think there's a few things related to like what, what's our actual intent here? Um, because if we say two parcels, do we want this site building coverage to apply twenty percent for those two parcels that are being presented as one site? Or do we want the twenty percent to apply to each of the two parcels? Like, let's say there's some resource protection reason why you wanna have disassociated clusters on one project.
I don't think it's per parcel.
So I just
Essentially, they'll be, they'll be two different, you know, for assessment purposes, for example, it would be two separate projects. So I would think that would, the answer to that would be per parcel.
And so does that mean under six, it should be maximum lot coverage by building as opposed to site coverage? I'm just, I'm nitpicking the word site versus lot. So in, in number one under eight, five, four, it says RCD may be permitted where the project site is at least twice the area.
Well, that's interesting.
Of the minimum lot.
Kinda doesn't make sense from a language point of view, right? Cause you're saying that the project actually has to be bigger than the minimum lot size? Twice the size, you know, what I'm reading?
That's, yeah, that's my
Do, do you do a cluster development? No, but I think This is like a, like, technical thing, cause what the language says is that the project site has to be twice the area of the minimum lot. I think what we wanna say is that the, the the lot has to be twice the size of the minimum lot size.
What's the difference?
A project site is the building.
Project site.
Project size, where you put the buildings.
May include several lots combined or contiguous or maybe not contiguous.
Right, but you're saying that the project site has to be twice the area of the minimum lot size required for the district.
So if it's in a one-acre zone?
It's gotta be two acres.
You have to have at least two acres.
Well, no, if it's, if it's
It doesn't make any
If it's town water and sewer, it has to be one acre.
It doesn't make sense, cause to me the project site is where, is what gets disrupted on the site. So it's, what's being disrupted to
I guess
create the project.
I saw site as like, when you come before the board and you've got which parcels are making up your project. If it's, if it's two one-acre parcels and the minimum lot size is one acre and we've got a total of two acres, I, I was just trying to figure it out, you know, from like a practical standpoint. Does it make sense? And, but then we use the word site again in number six in terms of the coverage. And so is that what we mean that if you've got two acres, you can only have twenty percent coverage on the whole project site? So again, say it's two parcels? Or would you allow twenty percent coverage on each lot? So I just
I understand what you're
Cause one is quite a bit more development than the other. Lot would give you more development, site would give you less development, in my opinion, the way I'm reading this straight up.
But why would? I don't know.
I think we just need to understand what, what do we intend? We intend to cluster.
I mean, it's kinda feels like it's a little mixed up with the campus overlay a little bit. Where campus overlay will allow multiple lots to be part of one project. This kind of doesn't make sense to me that to allow more than one lot per project.
This, this could allow more than one lots within a project, yes.
So how would you work out what Brandy is suggesting?
If you have two, two lots as part of the project, that is the entire project site. And it's twenty percent of the entire project site, not of each individual parcel within the project site.
Yeah, so I just, I, I want us to think, is that what we, what we
No, it'd make it much less dense, obviously, if you had that, that example. The whole purpose here is to build density to a degree, right?
Right.
So if you've got one acre site and you can put twenty percent on it, and you have two acres, and you can only do twenty percent on it.
Would a developer just think that through though and come to us with two projects?
I mean, I never even thought about that, the way that you put it.
Am I misreading it in your opinion? I just was trying to like
If you could, if it
I just
If a developer wanted to build more and he had the frontage to create two lots, he could just create two lots. What's the big deal?
As long as Okay, I mean, we can kick it around. I think we may wanna talk about in the table under number six, whether or not we wanna say maximum lot coverage by buildings or maximum site coverage.
Well, I think that's a selling point to the town meeting, is that we're not increasing the density of what's allowed.
Whether you have two ten thousand square foot lots in a site, twenty thousand square feet, twenty percent of that is your coverage. Whether it's twenty percent of one ten thousand square foot lot or twenty percent of two ten thousand square foot.
It's, it's not really what, what the developer can do, it's what he would choose to do, is the way I'm seeing is, is that Yeah, I haven't thought this through, cause I didn't even consider that that's what contiguous lots meant. To me, the, what I, how I read it was that every lot would have its own dimensional requirements. Regardless, but it could be part of the same project. In other words, it can come forth to us, present a project on multiple lots, but it's one project. But each lot would have its own dimensional requirements.
And I've, I've seen that be problematic, because you want your clusters to be close, which may be less than your underlying setback requirements.
Well, it would be here, right? Cause we'd have forty feet between units at the, at the minimum. At the lot lines, or at setbacks.
This is why this says exterior property.
Uh, that's true. That's true.
The setbacks are to the exterior, not within the
That's true.
Not within the site.
So if there were
In the neighborhood.
Yeah, okay.
That's right. Lessens the impact on the neighborhood, but allows within the project buildings.
What is the, I mean, exterior properties, was in?
The exterior of the project site.
Alright, so
Yeah, like if this is, if, if you had a road with three parcels from a, from a Form A, right, you could, you could ignore the property lines that are interior to the project site. Maybe we need a tie, a tie room. Um, the other question, um, I had was whether or not under the cluster requirement. So we have, we made this change from the last meeting. So dwelling units shall be clustered in groups of at least four. And the maximum distance between any two of budding units within a cluster shall be not more than twenty feet. Um, I wondered if we wanted to give any kind of potential for the planning board to waive that if there were some sort of unique site characteristics? Like, uh, uh, a abrupt change in grade or something? Or if we wanna just hold to this?
A glacial erratic or something?
Yeah, I mean, I just
Well, good. Well, we have to come to the planning board for site plan review.
They do, yes. But we don't, we don't, we give that same latitude for parking, right? Well, actually, no, we don't. Maybe I was reading something else, sorry.
It's, it's kind of like a variance, you know, because it's the, it's the topography or the shape of the lot or what have you. It's all those triggers.
Do you think we'd be able to address that at site plan without having language in there?
As a variance?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we need to put language in there, right?
Yeah, probably. You can always get the planning board some authority.
Well, maybe it's more generic than, maybe it's one, two, three, four, uh, five and six, you know, that the, the board. I, I think we should talk about whether or not we want to be able to give the developer flexibility based on them making a compelling argument, why one of these dimensional things.
Well, I think you have to put, you could put in there that the planning board could waive these and then list the conditions that a variance allows. You know, whether it's topography or lot size, and there were, there were a couple others, but
Okay.
Okay, look into that.
Okay.
Um, it may trigger a, you know, for a special permit. And if you're gonna waive regulations, you may, may have to kick it into a special permit.
Even if we bug it in, in here?
It depends how specific you can get.
Okay.
You know, if you can be specific in these circumstances for these reasons, but if you can't be specific, then it's
Well, we can let the AG tell us.
Well, yeah.
Okay. Did you guys have any other comments on it?
I had a question. I like the first line, the parking, the minimum of one off-street parking area shall be provided for each dwelling unit in the RCD, so.
Parking space, maybe I should say parking space.
Well, again, that was the confusion, but if you're saying cause you, you mean, you can interpret it as saying that for each dwelling unit, you need a parking area, which is kind of obvious.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it should say parking space.
I agree with you, and I think number one then covers that the parking spaces are clustered. Um, can I ask a question about eight, five, seven? Pedro, I was gonna ask you this question, but does the Massachusetts Building Code use the, um, IB, the International Building Code's, um, fire apparatus access road requirement? Cause we're saying here that the traveled width less than sixteen feet wide nor more than twenty-two feet wide. And I think fire code requires twenty as a minimum, although I think it can be addressed with stabilized.
Yeah, the, the state amends it, but it's, it leaves a lot of discretion to the fire chief.
Okay, so do you, are you comfortable that there's discretion in here that, okay?
Yeah.
Please, can you make that larger so I can read it across the room? If not, it works.
I don't know which screen I need to make it larger on.
For our new readers.
You need your, yeah, your faraway glasses. Perfect, thank you, Pam.
Can I ask like a general question to this? This lot coverage for the cluster development in the R four is, is a little problematic for me, cause I understand why it's in there in the, you know, in section four point O of the bylaw. Obviously to prevent, although you could still build a huge house, it's obviously to prevent the size of a thing. But we do wanna consider that you can maybe build a bigger cluster in an R four development or in an R four lot? In our four district.
Or you can, by definition, so, a bigger one.
Are you suggesting that the ten percent coverage should be increased?
I'm wondering if the ten percent is enough. I guess the lots are bigger, right?
And the, I don't remember off the top of my head, is it a one acre?
It's eighty, eighty-six thousand square feet.
Two acres.
Right, so the lots are bigger, so the project by itself is gonna be bigger, even the ten percent.
Yeah.
Well, so ten percent would be eighty-six hundred square feet of
Right, but if you consider two, you know
That's at a minimum.
Right.
Minimum.
It's in a maximum.
Well, you would need four acres. Wouldn't you need double?
Yeah.
So if you think about ten percent of four acres, I mean, whatever, you're already on gigantic lot, you're not gonna be able to do anything on. Or not anything, but you're not gonna be able to do as much as you could on, on a smaller lot.
The, the only thing I would say there is that R four is generally in areas where there's not any sewer and water and an onsite sewer in a lot of the areas in town that are R four is gonna be like a really big, like raised system, and it's gonna take up of three quarters of an acre to an acre.
Let's be pretty enough.
Yeah, but I mean, they've got their own setbacks then, right, from property law.
I don't know, I'm just wondering just about the, you know, the viability of, of these large lots here, so we're talking four acre minimum to do a project with ten percent coverage.
Yeah.
Why are you talking four acre minimum?
Cause you need double a lot.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Just a question.
Yeah, no, good question. I think we wanna raise that again. Should it be higher? So potentially more like the R two at twenty percent? Is that what you're thinking?
Potentially, I guess we can, I can run numbers and see what the difference would be, really.
Well, at twelve hundred, we can kinda run those numbers right now, right? Um, if it was sixteen thousand
And that doesn't necessarily be the footprint.
It's not the footprint, that's the cover, right, right? Right, I understand that. If we had, let's just use sixteen thousand. And then we had twelve hundred per unit, right? So that's thirteen units. Thirteen units, say two bedrooms each. I think it could sustain twenty percent pretty easily, yeah. Do you have any concerns of going to twenty percent coverage on the R four?
Um, I haven't considered it, yeah, so I reserve my judgment.
Okay.
Do you wanna take it? I was busy zooming, so I didn't really follow.
That's okay. I think we wanna, we'd like to consider going to twenty percent for the R four. It, over ten. Just thinking that the minimum lot size would be four acres. And it would have, you know, onsite water and onsite wastewater, but probably still has sufficient space to accommodate twenty percent coverage.
Uh, do you wanna take a question?
Please, question? Hi, Eileen, do you have a question?
Oh, no, I don't. I have a typo. Um, all of it within the RCD tract, down two lines, exclusive. Shouldn't that be use of a resident?
Yes.
Okay.
Where are we with that? I'm sorry.
Here, I can show you. This is the only thing I discovered that I, I found, I typed it.
Excellent.
It's exclusive use of a resident.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I do have a question. There is no special permit requirement at this point, correct?
That's correct. We are trying to do this as site plan only.
Got it, okay.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you.
I have another question too. And I have the same question, well, for this. Since what we're trying to do here is to have, you know, more people living on a lot. More apartments, more opportunities. And one lot to live together and to kind of form small communities. Would we consider, would you guys ever think about allowing some type of retail use? Something that would be like a general store or that kind of thing?
As accessory?
Yeah, that would allow these people to not have to jump in their cars to go get a gallon of milk or some basic necessities that they can, you know, these things are prob, likely gonna have some type of association that can likely handle the operations of the, something like that.
Would that include childcare? I'm just, now we're
Isn't child, didn't you include, include childcare in this, or?
This one, yeah.
Right, well, you know, childcare very well could be something, I think childcare is allowed everywhere there.
It is, yeah.
Restricted. But, uh, you know, for me, these things are important. I mean, in, in my neighborhood, it'd be great if there was a general store there, I know on the hill, it'd be great.
So I guess, I, I understand the comment. I don't think it's ever going to be feasible to actually operate that.
Right.
General store, I mean, you need
It's hard enough to run a store downtown.
You need two thousand rooftops to sell a gallon of milk. I mean, it's not if, if there was a market for a general store, there'd be one in the middle of his tonic.
Yeah.
So it, it doesn't, um, I, I don't think four, ten, or twenty units is gonna support a general store. It might support, you know, a cow on the back, five raw milk, but, but not, I, so I, I get the intent, but I just think it's not really gonna be practical here.
Just thinking, you know, finding ways to get cars off the road and get people to congregate is part of this
Community garden.
Thing, yeah.
Yeah, and if like retail is not gonna, not gonna really fly, it's not worth chasing that one, but uses like gardens, ag on the site that we've talked about in this draft.
Plus you got, makes sense, the clustered parking, so you're gonna force people to interact there.
Mm-hmm. Presumably, if you had ag, you had a little like, you know, little shed that had a little farm stand in it potentially, so.
You know, I've just, I've lived in, and I know that they're urban areas, but I've lived in these urban areas, and they allow small things, not just general store. I lived in this, it was all residential neighborhood in a car-centric community, but our little neighborhood had a bagel shop.
Mm-hmm.
And it was awesome. And these guys ran it. They lived upstairs and they ran it. They'd end up in every day. It wasn't their primary source of income. It was like a little labor of love, but it really brought Saturdays, Friday, Saturday, Sundays, I mean, everybody would go there. It's great. So, so that's what I'm talking about, just allow some other kind of mercantile use, that's not, it's not prohibited.
So if I moved into that cluster arrangement, would I be able to talk to my neighbors and say, let's do a dog park, and I'll do a dog park?
Well, that's not
I guess, I'm, I'm
But I, I mean, that's, you know
That could be open space.
Yeah, I, I think so, but I think maybe what you're talking about could be covered under home occupation. You know, if I wanted to like turn, you know, my front room into a little bakery and
Cookies.
And
You can actually, it's, there's some, I remember, you can give it away. But you, but as soon as you sell it, you become something different, yeah. Cause we were talking, I've had these discussions before, cause there was a lady who was baking stuff on Church Street.
So that means yard sales are illegal?
Well, you, you need a permit.
Temporary, right? All right, uh, something to talk about maybe with the
Thank you.
other board, the rest of the board?
These are, if, if, if a hundred years ago, when they developed single-family zoning, they would allow these, these kinds of things, we wouldn't really have single-family zoning.
Yeah, but I think it was in more of a village setting. I don't think we're talking about wanting to create like fifteen villages in the town.
Why not? Archipelago, man, it's centralized city.
We already have an archipelago. We got Edgar, we got Edgar Barrington, who's a tonic. I don't know that we want to like
Listen, in Great Barrington, we have a
Follow out the, what we have already. We wanna encourage infill.
But that's the whole point, is encourage info. If there was a, if there was like a hot shot bagel place up at the Habitat project, you know? Or a donut shop.
Are you hungry?
If there's a donut shop at the Habitat projects, you know, I would go.
So MXD already allows stuff like that. B three, I think it does also. There may be
I don't wanna, I don't wanna bog us down, I just thought it would be worth considering.
Do you wanna look at what zones already have it? Because it may already be provided for in the underlying zones.
Yeah, I just basically looked at, at
You're just throwing something out there?
No, I just looked at what we, what, you know, food establishments, you can really do stuff like that.
Okay.
You have to bear in mind that we have to get this through town meeting.
I get it.
And, and if you say someone's gonna put in a grocery store next to my house, unless
It's not just a grocery store. No, it could be anything. What if somebody wanted to do yoga to you?
Again, home occupation?
That's not home occupation. I don't know, could be, it could be, but, but as, as soon as you charge money for things, it becomes
Home occupation, it's a lot of flexibility, yeah.
Found in the bylaws.
Yeah.
You can roll down there.
And, and you can charge money for your occupation at home.
That's right.
Yes.
What I'm suggesting is that, that these cluster, cluster developments, if somebody, if this were allowed, the person building it would make a space, a communal space, and that communal space could at first be, you know, a, a community space, or it could be a party space or whatever, but then potentially somebody might have the idea, hey, you know, why not, you know, I don't know.
I, I think a common space would still be permitted, like, uh, like a communal clubhouse or something like a, with a
Sure, but again, but what if, if, if the community decided that, you know, we might get better usage, this were something else.
I don't know, that's, that sounds like a hypothetical too.
Well, that's, yeah, with the whole thing, I don't know. All of it is hypothetical, of course.
Do we have a case statement for what we're trying to do here in the houses and everything? Does that open it up to understanding?
Well, so on what was sent to us, uh, I can't remember, last week, uh, sometime, um, Chris put together a little narrative that kind of framed why we're looking to make this change. I mean, we go to town meeting, a lot of times that's part of the information.
I was thinking, does it exist for somebody who's going back to the code?
Hmm, there's usually, under the purpose section, some sort of Hmm, there's usually under the purpose section, some sort of statement, and right now, what we say is to provide dimensional standards, open space and parking requirements and design guidelines that will foster the development of smaller residential units clustered around or near common open space. So that's sort of the stated purpose is like cluster development. And this stems from a desire to, you know, minimize the like amount of infrastructure that needs to go in.
Here is just.
Yeah.
Just to make it, you know, compelling.
Yeah, yeah. I'm sure it could be more like compelling, but you know, that's sort of technically why we're looking at, at doing this. Any, is there anything more on perks?
The units, how do we come up with that number?
Sixty?
Twelve hundred?
Twelve hundred. I thought you came up with that number, no? Okay.
It's just meant to be a modest phone.
But the state law uh, um, affordable housing says eighteen hundred, I think.
Sorry, are you worried?
Aren't you, John?
Eighteen hundred?
Yeah, the, um, forty forty Y, I think.
Goodness.
The, the, um, what do they call that?
It's a.
Start, the starter home.
Sort of, yeah. Uh, they allow up to eighteen fifty, I think.
Well, this is, oh, this is maximum, hmm.
The idea is just to keep the homes reasonably small and reasonably affordable.
I, I misread the maximum. I thought it was minimum, sorry. Twelve hundred is good. Let's let it down.
So, no, it's where I used to live in Tucson, and it was beautiful, this wonderful.
I'm not, I'm not saying that disparaging.
Adobe houses, you know, sharing the land.
I give Levitt House credit for, you know, raising an entire generation. I don't, I don't say that disparaging.
Are, are you worried that we're running afoul of some starter home?
No, no, again, I misread it.
Okay, okay.
I don't know why I read mi- minimum in there.
Okay.
What's next?
I think we're good on residential cluster. I think we don't have any major changes except for our four to twenty percent. I don't think that's major. So next would be Simon's Rock Campus.
Is, is there any, can I stop?
Oh, yeah, before we go on, yeah.
I mean, is there? Does the board want to continue with this? Do we?
Yes.
Want to move this towards, you know, more of a kind of a hopefully plain language, community engagement process going towards a public hearing in town meeting?
Okay.
Yes.
I'd like to see user-friendly language in there somehow. I mean, it's, we understand what we're saying, but I'm not sure if it's coming out.
Right. So go, go to a public hearing with a draft substantially in this forum and try to try our best to communicate it.
I think so.
I think so.
Good.
Uh, Malcolm emailed us and said basically the same, that he was supportive of this revised language as well.
Okay.
Like to be part of that.
Okay, great.
So just in terms of that, let's see, so we have to have our hearings done by the end of March?
Towards the end of March. So maybe next meeting, I'll try to share with you some ideas of what's next in terms of communication and.
Okay, that'd be great, and like a schedule for getting
Yeah.
finalizing public hearing referrals, all of that, okay. That would be super. Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to item number five. Simon's Rock Campus. Do you have any first comments on Simon's Rock Campus? You've sent us the overlay district language.
Right, so for the benefit of the board and folks who are listening, um, the, the planning board at the last meeting discussed the Simon's Rock closure and the fact that existing zoning there allows for essentially single two and three family residential homes by right. And that any other type of development and mixed-use development wouldn't be allowed. Um, certain other developments like assisted living might be allowed by special permit. And educational use would still be allowed by right. But the point, the point was that the, the board identified zoning as a potential barrier to some sort of future reuse of the site. Whether the existing buildings or other buildings or some sort of non-educational use. Zoning is a barrier to that. The planning board decided to move forward with trying to see what it could do to address that barrier. Um, what, what I've done for talking purposes here tonight and what I sent you is the outlines of a campus overlay district, which would apply to, well, however we decide to draw it, could be applied to the entire campus, all parcels or just the main campus, who knows? That's for discussion, um. It's essentially the same regulatory structure as what, uh, the board used for the Hurstonic Mills and which town meeting approved and is in place in the zoning bylaw, the mill overlay district. And it recognized the, the uniqueness of the site. And that, you know, there could be a lot of community benefit opportunities for some, some good development. I have not gone through in detail to think about what uses should be considered, what you, uses should be allowed by right. What community benefits should be provided in return for certain uses. So that's all to be discussed here and in future meetings. So, structure, purpose of the, of the district, the uses and the dimensional requirements, I think are all things that you should discuss. I'll, I'll share the screen when you're ready, but let's maybe have the general discussion purposes.
So, I think I'm remembering some of you said last that our last meeting that I think is incorrect about the usage of Kilpatrick and Art, the Daniels Art Center. Because those are legally, they will be legally pre-existing non-conforming uses once the campus is closed and if the use doesn't change and as long as it's used within a two-year period, that's grandfather, it's continued.
Yeah, you may be right about that.
And so it doesn't, we don't have to worry about that. The, the main thing is a two-year period. And if someone came, if someone were gonna buy it and they opened it up for one day, that would work.
I wondered about that too, and so I'm glad you're raising it as a point. I think the piece that I haven't been able to puzzle out, Jonathan, related to that, is that each of those buildings that you cited are on parcels that have other buildings on them as well. And so I'm having a hard time getting around the like one parcel, one use. Um, even if one building on that parcel continues in a use, there's still the other buildings on those parcels, and how do we facilitate their ability to con- continue in some adaptive reuse?
Is, is there another building on the, the Kilpatrick site?
If I remember correctly, the, um, the main part, the main part of the campus is like chunked up into three or four really large parcels, and there's multiple buildings on each parcel.
Yeah.
And so it's not as neat and tidy. Now, that's not to say that the jacket, for instance, couldn't be like A and R'd. There's a ton of frontage there, right? So maybe that can be overcome. I don't believe that's the case for the Kilpatrick unless there was some creative um, subdivision that happens, because.
We'd have to look at the lot.
Yeah, that lot doesn't have, um, frontage at all. It's just a landlocked lot. Um, so I don't know, I mean.
Why is that a problem?
Uh, because I don't want to, yeah, I guess. The other thing is that we talked last time about the fact that those uses, I think the case, the Kilpatrick Athletic Center is a little bit different because it was a clear public use, but the Daniels Art Center has pretty limited public use.
Doesn't matter.
I, I understand, but the intensity of use is gonna change dramatically if it's, uh, like, uh, a, a theater group in there, right? Like as opposed to the, um, as opposed to the school using it on its sort of periodic basis or educational use basis.
Great Barrington Public Theater uses it all the time. But you, it's basically where the art school is. It's got the theater spaces, right, with the Black Pox and the big theater. There's that long building.
Yeah.
That's all classrooms.
Yeah.
And then it has a sort of annex, which is like an accessory to the other buildings that has the ceramic studio.
Mm-hmm.
And woodworking, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
So the, you know, that, the, the piece that has the ceramic studio and the wood shop, that's all public use. But the most, it's, it's really, the guy who runs the ceramic shop is related to Simon's Rock, but I know tons of people that go in there and do ceramics. So, I don't know, it's a tricky, I mean, what she's saying is not wrong. I mean, if we, if we look at land use history and land use regulation, I mean, what she's talking about is very problematic. I think the, an overlay kind of takes care of it to a degree. You know, but that would mean that people, that you would have to have one entity running the place or some organization that's taking care of it or something, I don't know. It's complicated.
Yeah, a- and the other thing, I don't think we left the last meeting with consensus on whether or not we do this. Um, uh, preemptively, or whether or not we wait and react to some proposal, and I think, you know, I, I've been leaning more towards the preemptive side of things. Get the ball rolling, take advantage of the fact that we're i- in a cycle to hit town meeting now, um. We haven't brought Bard into the designation, right?
Town meeting.
Hmm?
So, the campus won't even be closed at this town meeting.
That's true, but does that matter?
Yeah.
In what way?
Well, because you don't know what Bard's gonna do. They're gonna try and sell it. Are they gonna sell it piecemeal? Are they gonna try and sell the whole thing? Do they have a buyer?
Right.
There's so much we don't know.
I- is it appropriate to contact Bard and there's, I would consider them a stakeholder in a rezoning of the campus?
Yes, I'm sure they would love it. I mean, I'm sure they would love a re-zoning. It would be so much easier for them to sell it.
I, I don't know. I'm not sure if that's true. I think it's a tricky piece of property regardless.
Do we consult with them or do we do it not consulting? What's the appropriate thing to do? Is there an appropriate?
Well, I mean, if we think about our normal approach and we do zoning, we have a public hearing, right? But we're applying like broadly to a large geographic area, um. I don't think for the mill overlay, we did not like call the mill owner specifically, did we? Um, so I don't, I don't think. Yeah, I, I don't think we're obligated to call them, but you know, to the point that we don't know exactly how they're approaching the sale. Is this a hindrance or is this a help? I don't know. Um, I think that'd be a question that would come up from the public when we do a public hearing, and so we should probably preemptively figure that out.
And what about the, the Jenny and Most group? What's happening with that?
Um, I had, oh, go ahead.
I, I it's own thing. I'm not associated with them all. I have no idea.
Yeah.
But there are people that are thinking about this, maybe we should pick their brains as well.
Yeah, I had a, a conversation with Peter Most, and I don't get the sense that he's leaning towards a zoning amendment at this point in time. I think probably because things are not well-formed in terms of need at this point in time. Um, so.
Question?
Sure.
One of the other members, I'm gonna actually ask you, Pedro, of Peter Most's group. Certainly maybe eleven or twelve that haven't been named.
You're asking me if I'm part of the group?
I know you're part of the group. I'm asking you who the other members that have not been named are. Is it public?
It's not really a public group. I don't know. I don't know. People would want to be named.
Say that again?
I'm not sure that people would want to be named.
I don't think it's your, I don't think it's your responsibility to name anybody.
Eight of you were named out of the twenty? I'm just curious.
I, I think when a group of private citizens gets together and talks, um, that they have that, like if I go to a coffee shop and talk to a group of people, I don't have to disclose that.
Yeah, except for, I'm not so sure this is a private group simply because there's a lot of public power officials involved, A. And in my simple mind, I'm asking, is this actually the latest version of the Economic Development Review Team?
I don't have any information on that. So I, I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna bring the discussion back to the overlay and whether or not we think this is something we need to move forward now or move forward in reaction to a request from the landowner.
So my question doesn't get answered, please?
Uh, we don't have any information for you, Claudia, I'm sorry.
Well, I didn't ask you, Randy.
Well, I'm the chair and all things are to be directed to the chair.
Well, I have.
That is the point of order.
He's a member of a twenty.
He does not have to answer that.
Fine.
Thank you.
I didn't expect him to answer.
It's not appropriate. It's not even
Good, thanks.
Part of the discussion we're having right now.
Thank you.
Um, so I think that's the discussion. Do we want to continue discussing the overlay? And move it forward, or do we want to weigh and react?
I think what I like to see is like a very vague overlay that says if you're interested in the product, property and your project comes up to the table.
What is it? How are we, how are we defining overlay here?
It's a term of zoning that, um, identifies properties of sort of similar characteristics that maybe are unique to the, um, underlying zone and gives flexibility for redevelopment. And, and we did the same thing with the mill buildings. They're in obviously a densely um, populated residential area, um, and so recognizing like it's just a different development pattern, um, to redo a mill and trying to find ways to revitalize those mills, we used an overlay to try and build them. Yeah, it's.
Different level of protections or regulations on top of what's allowed normally. So it's a residential zone. Are there other things that could be considered in that area? Other overlays include like the water quality protection overlay district. Uh, the floodplain overlay district. So if you're in those areas, there are other special protections that could be triggered or could apply. This is the same thing. There could be other special regulations that could apply, but other types of uses that could be possible.
Do we have to get permission to create an overlay district?
It's just like any other town meeting, town, uh, just like any other zoning amendment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Question, isn't the campus in the water quality protection overlay district?
A small portion.
Portion of the, uh, like extreme westerly portion of some of the parcels, yeah. Like, like west of.
South part.
Uh, I want to say west of off the road and maybe a little bit near the athletic center as part of the Zone Two area.
It, it's, it is shown on the, um, zoning map pretty clearly, Claudia, if you wanted to reference that. Um, it's associated with the Bro- Kelsey Brook, that's back in there. I think that's called Kelsey Brook.
It's also the only other property listed in the two thousand's resource water assessment program report. It's having an EPA number along with my seventy-nine month annual property.
Okay, good to know. So, um, do we want to comment on this, or do we want to sort of table it for the time being? That's the, that's the decision I think we need to make tonight.
Uh, well, I think we should have a full board here to.
Exactly.
So put it on the next agenda and hope everybody's feeling well?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you okay with doing that?
That's.
Do that to the next agenda?
Yeah.
All right, I don't have anything more on mobile homes and trailers. Um, I think the, our minutes from the last meeting said that I should contact the Affordable Housing Trust, and I have not done that, so I need to follow up there. So I'd suggest moving that to the next meeting as well. Is that all right? Um, number seven, open space requirement.
This is something that I've been thinking a little bit about, um, section eight point three point three is um, the multi-unit residential development regulations. And the open space requirement is something that this board has talked about over the years a number of times. Seems like every time you you get close to section eight, you start to think about the open space requirement eight point three. Um, the, uh, the requirement says that for any multi-unit well, development. This is an eight point three point three, item one, permeable open space. This is an eight point three point three item one, permeable open space, including lawn or garden. But not including structures, driveways, parking spaces. Shall be not less than fifty percent of the area of the property. And as I think about where multi-unit development. Can be permitted, like in the M X D zone or uh other types of mixed or residential zones. It seems like fifty percent, but reserving fifty percent of the lot exclusively for lawn and garden type areas. Could be an extremely high burden to actually developing that lot.
Yeah.
Putting any sort of building on a lot, much less the associated parking. Um. There are some. Exceptions in the zoning code to that fifty percent requirement, but they're pretty limited. Um, it's for existing buildings. Um, only in certain districts. Um, or exempting existing buildings within the B two H V C M X D. So while there are some restrictions, it's. Or or uh possibilities for exemptions, it's. Still, I think, potentially an overly restrictive requirement. Um. I think that. Probably six or eight years ago, when the planning board started to, when the town started to recognize that there were a number of. Six, seven, eight unit homes around town that have existed since nineteen hundred, nineteen twenty. Um, without special permits. Or that came into being after zoning and they weren't protected by any uh non-conforming pre-existing use laws. Um. The, the building started to transact and sell or be refinanced. And people say, oh, my gosh, I can't refinance and improve the six unit building. On East Street or Deconic or wherever it was. Because your zoning doesn't allow it, I can't get the mortgage to do it, I'm gonna have to evict six people or six, six household. So at the time, the planning board said that doesn't seem good, let's provide an exemption, an exemption. Where those existing buildings. Don't have to meet the open space requirement, and that seemed to make sense, it was a way of preserving housing in place. But as you think about it from new developments in in some of these zones, I think that open space requirement is. Still. Very restrictive, takes away half of the lot.
Yeah, that's crazy.
So it's something I think. They're thinking about and and um. Discussing and. Either paring it down or thinking about a way to have the applicant. You know, at the very least, be able to apply for a special permit to to waive those requirements, either pare it down or provide a. Possible way out through a special permit process. So that's, that's what I've been thinking and I laid it on the table for you.
Why don't we just? I don't know why we have an open space requirement there. On, when we have a lot coverage. What more do we need?
Setbacks, not coverage.
We've got setbacks and lot coverage, why do we need? To go into open space, I don't think we do and. Multi-unit buildings.
If 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 I put my engineer hat on, I would say maybe in. Part just to allow for some area for stormwater management on those small lots. Um, I I don't know that fifty percent is necessary, but I I wouldn't. I mean, you've got whatever the coverage is, so I think we'd have to look at, you know, like, what the coverage requirements are here, and if that leaves enough. When you think about adding parking and everything, that it leaves enough green space to provide for some sort of, you know, space to. Accommodate stormwater runoff. If you're building new and you're taking a one acre undeveloped lot.
Yeah.
And, you know, the building coverage is. Twenty percent or whatever we were just looking at. And then you're gonna do another. Twenty or thirty percent for driveways and parking and things like that. You know, do you have enough space to infiltrate or manage your stormwater on that property exclusively?
But doesn't that, I mean, that comes to us with site plan review.
It's not something we really look at technically.
Look to you to look at.
Yeah, and then I. It it can be.
It's in the criteria.
It it is, yeah, no, it is, it is, I I I'm not saying I agree with the fifty percent at all, I'm I'm totally open to reducing that. Or eliminating it entirely.
I mean, cause where you see multi-unit buildings, it's gonna be. Stockbridge Road or downtown or whatever, it's not gonna be. On West Plain Road. So. I mean, that's a, that's a heavy, heavy lift, I think.
I'd rather keep the open space there.
On North Plain Road?
On West Plain, North Plain, wherever. Then have it, you know, downtown.
Um, I think we're open to discussing it, should we put it on the next agenda when? More of the board is here?
Sure, do you wanna? See some proposed language or?
I think it's either an elimination or a reduction in the number, I think it's pretty simple. Yeah, I mean, those are the options, right? Eliminate. Reduce.
I don't like the special permit, cause everybody's gonna wanna do, so why even put them through that burden?
Of the special permit?
Everybody's gonna wanna, I mean. They're penciling in a project.
Do we know why it was?
I wanna say that that requirement was bigger. I wanna say that that requirement was maybe sixty, maybe even eighty percent at one point. And that we reduced it, I remember Holly Hamer was in here and she was not happy with it.
I'd have to go back to previous versions to see what it was. And I think it's a longstanding requirement.
The amendment of.
But I don't, there's ever been any rationale for it beyond. Let's keep it.
I'll be honest, I don't remember the specifics of what we amended in article thirty three and twenty three. The top of my head. Uh.
Like, I could go back.
It just reads well, it just makes you, it's protecting open space.
Right, and so there's a emotional. Uh, reaction, I wanna keep that in there, I wanna keep open space, but that's great in certain areas of town and maybe less appropriate in other areas where. Um, developing. Could be encouraged. And so maybe it's twenty five percent, twenty percent, and you can reduce it further with it if you would. If get a special permit to reduce it further under certain circumstances, I I don't know.
What what percentage uh do the setbacks? If you take a standard lot.
I feel like we've done this exercise.
Somebody goes through their notes, I think we've got some little sketches on that.
You need to sketch out a lot and see what percent.
Yeah, I I know I did it in the past, but I don't remember what it was, but it was, it's not insignificant.
Right.
That where you can't build, so I that. Comes as open space.
Depends on the law, that depends on the zone.
Yeah, no, I understand. No, it's al- it's always been fifty percent, I've got a twenty nineteen code appear.
Eight three three already says this is per a special permit though. Right, that eight three three says requirements, multi-unit dwellings complying with the following special requirements is applicable. The special permit granting authority may waive. Any of these requirements for multi-unit.
In existence.
In existence, oh, okay. So this is.
So.
Multi-unit, so we would go back to the table use regulations and figure out if it's a special permit or right by right, okay, all right. But if it's a special permit, then the S P G A can already waive that requirement.
For buildings in existence, but not.
For new construction.
Right. So right now, there is a waiver, but it's really narrow.
Okay.
And it's only for that, as I, as I said, for those.
Okay.
To to keep housing in place, which is, which is a good purpose.
Yeah.
What were you trying to win Jonathan, when you said you wanted to eliminate it, eliminate all of this? All of the open space residential development requirements?
No, just this provision in eight three three one. Which says that. That if you're going to have a multi-unit dwelling, fifty percent of the total area of the property should be open space. Right? Okay, so we're talking about either reducing the number or eliminating the requirement.
More next time?
More next time.
Alright.
Alright, um.
There's a hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, his hand's up. Jovina? Jovanina?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, I know you're gonna talk about it next time and it's nice to see all of you, um, and I was gonna come in person, but then it's an evening. Um, so the only thing that I would think about the conversation that you're having is that. A multi-unit dwelling, um, I don't know, you know, I think about. Places where multi-unit dwellings in cities, and I know that we're not talking about a city. Um, have very little open space and therefore the temperature. Um, with increased, you know, with climate change, with the increase of general temperatures can be. More intense in those areas, and so in your future conversations, just thinking about, you know. Um, open space and trees is protective for the environment, you know, not just like the birds and the bees, but also, you know, human health.
Mm-hmm, that's a good suggestion, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, food for thought, good food for thoughts. All right, anything else on this before we move on? No, okay. We will move on to um master plan, I don't have anything further, I think we're sort of slowly picking through our um. Our boards and commissions meetings. Um. Did we make a request for uh planning assistance? Funds for master plan, or do we think given just time commitments for people, we should. Maybe think about that for later in the year?
Um, a budget request is not currently included in the F Y twenty six.
Okay.
Um. The uh. Select Board Finance Committee will begin discussing the draft budgets in February if you want to bring it up to them.
Okay.
I don't have good estimates. Um, I have ballpark estimates of what the total cost could be.
Anything that we should be looking to ask? The select board based on ten years, twelve years ago?
What do you mean specifically? Oh, in terms of support?
Yeah.
I I think when we had discussed this previously, we thought. Um, that we would need at least some technical support to do, you know, the. Public engagement and mapping and things like that, um, and. Although B R P C may be able to do some of that. Um, Cr- you know, Chris, I think your time is really in demand right now, so I don't wanna put that on you um in the near term.
Um, my instinct is that. Any work in the next fiscal year will have to be grant funded or provided. Somehow through regional planning or other, but not from. Uh, not from the taxpayer budget.
What about B R P C?
Yeah, possibly B R P C technical assistance.
You have, you have such good records on the last process, do you have the records of funding requests and who you got money from, where it came from?
No, it was primarily written in-house with. Uh, small amounts of in-kind assistance from regional plan.
I just think printing costs and graphics or anything.
It's all, it was all in-house using supplies, budgets of. Planning Department or the planning board. Yeah, it was. Very minimal.
But lots of time.
Oh, yeah.
Tremendous amount of time, very labor intensive.
We did win a prize.
Yes. Well done, we're very proud.
Well, the challenge is huge now.
Right, right, um, so I mean, I think the thing to do in the short term is to to look for grant funds. That we can apply for for uh a plan update. Um, and to sort of slowly do the planning board level. Engagement with boards and commissions and just accumulate that information and. Probably slow roll this for a couple of months.
I think for the next six to twelve months, it will be very difficult to get it started.
Really? Can we get a new town?
But we can move on to item seven, if you'd like, and we can talk about that.
Town plan, item nine?
Item seven.
I have.
I'm sorry.
We already talked about that.
Item nine. Uh, item nine is is, um, if I can, if I can go there.
Yes, please.
Space in our creation plan. We do have funding to begin that one. And, um. I I I know that you. The planning board and select board have been eager to see a master plan process started, but we don't have the resources to do that. Um, and my time is is really constrained. But thankfully, we will soon have funding to start an open space and recreation plan through grants. Um, and working with pressure regional planning commission. Um. Doing an open space and recreation plan involves a lot of the same type of. Mapping and demographic work that a master plan would. So, um. An advantage of having funding for an open space plan is we can get a lot of the work done.
Leverage some of it.
And leverage, leverage that as part of um a master plan. Um. Part of an open space records, re- recreation plan. Um. There there's a requirement to have a local committee lead that work. Um. I think that committee should be this board. And I think that for a few reasons, number one. Um. We have a lot of boards and committees in in town, and I don't have the time to steward yet another boarding committee. And a lot of you who should be involved in an open space and recreation plan effort probably don't have an extra night available. To come to open space and recreation plan meeting. Um. So that's one reason, um, another reason, as I said, is because an open space plan. Data gathering and mapping is very similar to a master plan, so two reasons it should be in front of you. Um, the the maps, the the land use, the demographics are all part of. You know, it's the same sort of work that you'd be doing anyway. And um finally, the state requires an open space and recreation plan to get further grants to do um. Parking improvements, to do open space acquisition, to do other things, so.
It's good to ride on the tails of another exercise, I'm looking at the um. The Ryan Beck Redhook connection, they did a big study that preceded the master plan, that fed the master plan.
Right. Now. This committee could. Or this board could spearhead the effort, but obviously, we would ask the select board to be involved. Um, the Parks and Recreation Commission, obviously, the Conservation Commission. Um, probably the Tree Committee. Um, our community liaisons funded through the M V P grant while they're available. Would be wonderful to have involved to help us to um reach out and and. Have folks get involved.
How about the C P C?
The Community Preservation Committee as a funding agency, um, also, great. So. Wh- what I am envisioning is that this board. At one of your meetings every month, first Thursday or the fourth Thursday. So, one of the meetings every month.
Second or fourth.
Yeah. An hour of that meeting is dedicated. To the open space recreation effort, similar, Jonathan, you remember when we did the master plan? One one of those nights was. Uh, combined master plant work and planning board. Kind of be similar. Um, so I think, I think it makes a lot of, a lot of sense to combine that work, um. First regional bank. Commission staff will help us out, um, will go out and do outreach.
And engagement.
And engagement, um, share the results here. And your charges of board would be to make sure that we're. Asking the right questions, talking to everybody involving as many people as we can.
Does the state have planned development guidelines that we should familiarize ourselves with?
Yeah, it can send you.
Okay.
Uh, they have kind of a checklist or a guidebook for writing an open space and recreation plan.
And is the the plans on the town website, I assume?
The current plan is, yeah.
Okay. Is it, how old is it?
Twenty thirteen, same vintage as the master plan. In fact, the open space chapter of the master plan is essentially the open space and rec plan.
Okay.
They were written almost simultaneously.
They one night kicked out the last time we did it?
They were both written and published in about twenty thirteen, yeah.
But didn't we have, we had a committee, were we?
We did, Pedro, you're right, um. Right before COVID, we started to update the open space and recreation plan. Um, and we had a committee formed, it included, I think, you, maybe also Jeremy, I can't remember. Um, a few citizen members, a member of the Parks Commission, a member of the Select Board, it was Kate at the time. Um. Yeah.
Conservation.
And conservation, and we started the process. And we did data gathering and mapping, and we had a community meeting like in January, right before COVID, and then the brakes. You know, we put the brakes on and everything stopped. So we're sort of revisiting that effort. See, Jovanina has her hand raised because she was part of that effort too. Um, and when you're ready, maybe.
Yeah, sure. No, the, we can go to that in just a second, but just in general timeline, what do you, what do you foresee as a timeline? Like, when would we potentially start this? And what's sort of the typical timeframe for completing this?
I'll check with regional planning. Um, as soon as we can get the grant funding solidified. We could start probably in the next couple of months, and it would run for eight to twelve months.
Okay.
No master plan, but open space plan?
That, that sounds good.
It's a warm up.
Exactly.
Built on.
It's built on.
We don't have any hand up at the moment. Okay. Um.
So that's great. I will. I, I will run with that. I, I think that's. Encouraging.
That sounds good. Everybody good with that? All right, anything else on town planners? Yeah, exactly. Do the best we can.
Um. Yeah, other things under town planners report. So. Again, coat tails on a plan, we have funding to do a required. Um, Americans with Disabilities Act um, transition plan for the town, which. Is a review of all town buildings and properties and programs.
Just town buildings.
Town, yeah. And services like the website, is the website accessible?
Hmm.
Um, to people with visual disabilities or whatever. Um. So we have to do an ADA transition plan. Um, it's part of. Various grants we've received over the years from the state, housing grants, being a housing choice community. Um, and we have funding to do it. British Regional Plan staff is standing by to do. Um, and a lot of the work that we do in the open space plan. Is looking at parks and recreation areas and are they accessible? So.
It'll all kind of merge together.
Kind of merge together. So we are going to start um, an ADA grant process, um, plan process. That's funded. Um, we can talk more about it next time, but I think again, the planning board will be a great sounding board, sounding committee for that work. To present findings and kind of be a good. Um.
Resource.
Um, yeah. And let's see. Maybe at the next meeting, I could have the RBC staff come and, and talk about the ADA plans specifically, and hopefully about, hopefully about the open space. Okay.
Okay, and in the meantime, you'll send us the plan guidelines for.
Yes.
For Massachusetts Open Space and Recreation Plan.
And then this final item in the something I emailed you is I was. Thinking about moving the February meeting date.
I was gonna ask you about that, yeah.
February date. And that was just. A hope on my part because. I, I'll have a four meeting night that week, and it's fine, I can do that because it seems like board members. Have different constraints and probably better just to keep the meeting schedule as it usually is. So I, I'm fine with that.
So forget about it.
Well, so the, the.
I'd love for you all to agree, but you won't agree.
The meeting.
A lot of different schedule constraints.
The meeting.
Everyone said they could do the.
The six, I thought was fine for everybody.
I didn't think that.
Yeah?
Oh, yeah, I think it is.
The sixth. Okay, so maybe the sixth.
Yeah, so that's one thing I was gonna say. Can we officially say that we're gonna make the meeting, be in the meeting on February sixth?
Can't officially say.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything to make you happy, Chris?
Come on, put it in the mess.
Two, six will be, so that'll be in lieu of our two thirteen meeting, we would meet on two, six.
Eight.
Right.
Twenty twenty five at the normal time.
And Malcolm could do that one?
He said he could. He, he preferred the other one, but.
But he said he could, yeah.
But everyone else was fine with it, so he said he could do it if you had to.
Oh, now you have the handle. Yeah, so I'm all set.
Yep. Yeah, go ahead. Wait, hold on, I'm gonna unmute you.
Hi.
Yeah. Okay.
I just wanted to go back. I didn't, I wasn't sort of fast enough to keep my hand up earlier when we were talking about the open space plan. So I just want to say that um. Chris and I had a conversation about it a few weeks ago, and Pedro and I had been on the original committee back pre-COVID. And one of the things that we really identified was the importance of. Not just reaching out to the community as sort of like. There's a committee and then the committee are experts and then we're gathering information from the community, but really bringing. Um, I don't remember what we said, Chris, like. Key community advisors of people who aren't normally. At the table, don't normally come to our meetings, and maybe people who aren't normally involved in government and decision making. So I just kind of wanted to throw that language in there on this first initial conversation about. You know, people who are more, whether it was more marginalized or just not as involved. Rather being sort of central as opposed to um, sort of second edge to the process of the open space plan.
Okay, thank you for that feedback.
Could I ask a question? How would we identify these people?
We have some ideas through Jovanina's and, and my collaboration as community liaisons through Lake Mansfield.
That's what I was gonna ask.
And um. Yeah, Jovanina, anything you want to say about that?
Sure, I mean, I think it's sort of, you know, I think that it's sort of populations first, right? Who doesn't come to meetings, who doesn't get talked to when you're gathering information and you're thinking about decision making? Who are you thinking for instead of who are you thinking with? And whose voices aren't at the table? And so, you know, the efforts, I don't think that you all have to do this. I'm one of the community liaisons, I'm providing contracting services to the town. So this is part of my job is to think about. Even creating conversations and connections for projects like this that are going to. Influence town decisions for, you know, the next decade.
So being proactive and not just working with people who walk up and volunteer.
Exactly.
People who got involved with Lake Mansfield but aren't working. Necessarily with.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's been great to have the community liaisons for Lake Mansfield, the Lake Mansfield Task Force had tried. To make sure they were reaching out broadly to the different user groups. Um, there's a um, a fairly substantial Latin population that. Uses the lake but, you know, isn't at our meetings and participating, and we wanted to make sure that. Um, that they had, you know, a voice in sort of how they use that space. So, yeah, no, I think, I think it's helpful.
Just thinking about Jovanina's comment with the open space requirement. You know, we, when we. I, 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 you know, I'm guilty of this. When I think about open space recreation, I'm thinking about big parks and walking trails and playgrounds. I'm not really thinking about urban environment.
Pocket parks.
Like a little courtyard.
You know, how people who live in denser neighborhoods need just as much. Quote-unquote, open space recreation for. Physical health, mental health. Um, you know, all these, all these important things that might not be front of mind in our typical process.
Dog health.
Well, and one of the, one of the most. I don't want to say most, I don't want to speak for you, Chris, but a really significant conversation that happened as part of the first MVP grant when. Um, multicultural bridge was leading convers- community conversations was we were in a small breakout room with, I think, three teens. Who talked about the importance of Lake Mansfield. And, you know, we went to her, we had one of those conversations with teenagers and what it meant for them growing up and the significance and, you know, symbolism of that. And those conversations, you know. Were a part of, uh, you know, were, they, they stayed in our mind and were a part of what shaped. The role of community liaisons, like who are we not talking to and what spaces are important to people for reasons that aren't, you know, generally known or talked about.
Great, thank you. Anything else on found later?
No, thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Um, board and subcommittee.
You may have another comment there.
Let's see. Uh.
Yes.
Yep. Jan?
Yes, yeah.
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, I know you tabled item six, but I was a little concerned about. The issue of potentially using trailers or mobile homes as ADUs. When I looked at the accessory dwelling unit handbook from California that came out this month. They have some valid reasons why they feel that ADU should remain as permanent items. And typically trailers and mobile homes are. Not a cost-effective way of trying to make more space in your yard for additional dwelling units. I was kind of curious as to how you felt you navigate that problem.
Yeah, we're, we're in the midst of it. If you have a resource or, or um, information that you think would be useful for us to consider. Um, please do send it our way.
Okay, I can do that. I've got the thing right in front of me. I'll just figure a way of shrinking it, emailing it to you.
Or if there's a, a link or something, you can email to Chris's planning address um, here at Town Hall. That'd be great. He'll share that with us.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh. Boards, subcommittees, issues or concerns, anyone?
I have something that I wanted to run by you guys.
Pedro?
So I've been. For a little while and I've been looking at the subject of rents in town. Um, I got my hands on a rent roster from the assessor. And what the roster tells me is that the median rent. In town is. Around twelve hundred fifty per one bedroom apartment.
Could you talk?
The, this is in line with, with HUD's fair market rents. So, you know, in the what, the HUD's fair market rents are used to determine who, what properties would qualify for section eight or what. Um. What's interesting to me, and I want to get, because I've got a little hypothesis that I want to get to maybe help you with. What's interesting to me is that even if we look at just census data, not even looking at the income data that comes out of town. If we just look at census, census data. It tells me that people are earning. Money, well, people, a single person renting an apartment. In great baron can afford about ten percent more than that median rent. A household, the house listing defines a household as non-related people living in it. So it could be a two-bedroom, three-bedroom, whatever. Those rents are, or, or the incomes that households generate. Can rent up to two thousand, two thousand sixty-one to be exact. And a family, two or three, can rent up twenty-seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We don't have any apartments in town that rent for those numbers. So. Are you still talking one bedroom? No, no, for the family, two or three bedroom, plus seven hundred. Uh, a household would be more than one bedroom.
Okay.
For about two thousand. I mean, this, this is just going on, on income data.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll tell you one problem that this effect has, this idea that rents in our town are massively suppressed. Especially when you get to the two and three bedroom.
Wait, the rent prices are suppressed or?
The rents are.
Or the renters are suppressed?
The rents are suppressed.
You mean they're low?
By what?
Of course, low.
By what?
By these numbers, by these standards. If you look at the, at the.
Are you saying the actual or the hypothetical?
I'm telling you, the information I got from the assessor.
Okay.
Twelve fifty is the median. The fair market rate by HUD is twelve seventy-six, so those are in line. But when you look at the incomes coming out of town, people in town can afford more than that. Okay.
People who live in town.
People who live and earn money here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Don't live but earn here, or how's that work?
People who live here, people who live here.
You mean like doctors or you mean like?
No, 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 doctors. That is a matter of fact, I've got information from, from Aradale and from the hospital. Doctors, technicians, physicians assistants, registered nurses, they all can afford significantly more. I've got the income data for that. Point being that I'm thinking that part of the reason why we don't see a lot of residential development in town is because there aren't any comparables. Because the income is there. In other words, there's people earning money here in town. That can afford these rents. But when a developer or somebody who wants to build some kind of multifamily housing or whatever, they go to a bank, the first thing the bank says is, well, what are rents going for in town? And they have nothing to show. So when a developer starts looking at rents too, they're gonna think, well, I can't get these rents in town either.
And so. What's your hypothesis you want us to chew on?
This might be a, a reason why we're not seeing a lot of multifamily development, just because of the economics.
Hmm.
Or the, it's not even the economics.
Of the economics.
Records of rents in the town?
Yeah, I have them.
Okay.
The median rent is twelve fifty.
But this is the first time we're hearing about it, or is it available in public record?
It's public information, you can go to the assessor and get it.
How does the assessor know this?
Because he, he has rentals. It's not, to be fair.
What do you mean he has rentals?
To be fair, hold on, something had rentals. He knows what buildings and what properties in town pay. Uh, or have rentals.
But how does he know what the rents are?
So I don't, you have to ask him, I don't.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I think this is bogus information. Because I don't, I don't think he has access to the actual rents.
Uh, to be fair, not every apartment was listed in, in the rentals that he. He, but I checked the rents, for example, at Copper Beach, and they are commensurate. So I don't think it's completely bogus, and I, no data is perfect. But I can tell you also the rents that are going here downtown are extremely low. Like, at forty percent AMI, that kind of stuff. And they keep them there, people live there, it's great. And, you know, I, I just have this. It happened, you know, it happened, it happened to me when I went to the bank to kind of talk to, to the guys about, you know, how you finance these things, and that's the first thing they ask. That's the reason I started doing this research.
So um, I guess I'm not understanding whether or not this is a bad thing, right? What you're saying essentially is that the rents, as you go up the size of unit ladder, the rents are more and more affordable. To the population that is renting them.
Yeah, this is, this is why, this is one, one sort of caveat there.
Okay.
It's, they're affordable to people who work in town.
Mm-hmm.
But the majority of those people don't live in town. In this, in this building, and Chris will back me up, I don't, how many people work in this building, Chris?
I, I don't know.
Is it like forty-five people, something like that? I was talking to Ross about it. And what, you know, just recently, there were three people. Who live in town, who work in this building. And I can tell you one person who drives as far as really in town. Who needs time to work here.
Okay, so you're not necessarily correlating right now, people who already live here with people who are renting here. You're just saying that on certain salaries, they theoretically could afford the rents that are currently here. This has nothing to do with. The fact that there's maybe a mismatch in demand.
Basically, what I'm saying is that the money that's earned in town, a lot of it is leaving town. Okay, because again, there's not this, the, the market. Uh, information that a person needs to develop the type of housing that the people who are above, you know, the. The lower AMI range can afford. I mean, we know that this, this housing is missing. I'm just suggesting that maybe. This might be a reason why, because our rents are like low and we have no way of proving that somebody can pay eighteen hundred dollars or eighteen fifty.
Is quality an issue?
Well.
Is quality an issue?
Of course it is an issue, but that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about really is this, is about information, and also I have a concern that. Some of the people who are earning money here in town are. Being, are housing elsewhere, because there's, there is no. There's no rentals, we know that.
Right, yeah.
Very little that they can purchase as well, so they have no choice.
Um.
I'm suggesting that it might be a hindrance to the development of this thing. I don't know what we do, I, I just want to bring it up as.
As, that's my question, is what, what do you, what do you want us to do about it?
Nothing that we can do about it. I mean, we don't want to.
So just a point of emphasis.
Charge more money for rents, I mean, that's ridiculous. But I don't know how to deal with this problem. This is like a, an inefficiency of the quote-unquote market that we all think is so wonderful and beautiful.
Uh, I think it's based on really bad information.
Why, you think that, that renters, that people are paying more money for rent in town?
Yeah, I know someone was paying two thousand dollars for a one-bedroom in town.
Well, there are, there are people paying that much.
You did say median.
There are, I did say median, because that is, I mean, when you look at the list, it's, it's like, it starts at like, uh, you know, ten sixty and it goes to twenty-eight hundred. But from twenty-eight hundred to like fifteen hundred, it's not, you know, a far leap. And then that twelve fifty.
But you don't know any about the condition of the units or.
But that's not, that's not really, because again.
That's critical.
No, no, it's not in what I'm suggesting, because the condition of units.
No, no, it's not in what I'm suggesting, because the condition of units is not important to a bank. You know, to a person who's gonna, who's gonna.
This is a philosophy discussion now, so like it, it's, it's.
It's not about it, it's not the market.
It's an observation of the markets. I think some of this is probably reflected in the housing. Assessment, housing needs assessment that was done. Whether or not, you know, we've talked about that needs to probably be updated, given post-COVID realities, right?
And how many, how many single families are on that list? Single family.
I don't know that the demographics were matched up, right? It's just.
There are a lot of rentals that are single family. That are on that list.
No, it's by apartment size, so you, I'm, if a, if a single person is living in a five room apartment, I mean.
I had, I had two rental properties. And.
I think this is interesting discussion, but not agenda discussion. Yeah.
I, you know.
It's just bogus.
Okay, fine, it's bogus.
It's just information.
It's information, that's all, it's, I mean.
You can turn into five seniors.
But how, but however you, I mean, I'd like to see. There, you know, there are departments that weren't there, the new apartments at Windrush, apartments up at at the top of Railroad. Or Bentley were, wasn't on the list either, but we know that those two are low and that these are relatively high. But that's the only comp that we have in town. Up at the top of Railroad. Soon we'll have these others coming up, coming on board. But the only real comparability show bank right now.
You've probably Houston renting a house for ten thousand dollars.
Uh was this apartments or houses or just rentals in general?
He doesn't know.
Rentals.
Any other board issues or concerns? All right, carrying on, do we have any further citizens speak? We've been sort of taking it as the meeting's been going. Citizens speak? Okay, seeing no hands raised, we'll adjourn at seven thirty two. Thank you, everyone.